2023, we are physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioner's courtroom, number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 78102. That was agenda item number one. Everybody please rise and join Commissioner Lenny for your prayer.
Dear Lord, we come to you today and give you things for allowing us to wake up and face another day. We thank you for the abundance of rain we've gotten over the past couple of days. We ask you to watch over all of us out there traveling the streets and to be with us today in this Commissioner's Court to make the best decisions for the county as a whole. We thank you in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas pledge honors the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the B, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Now, I think that was you. I think you did a little, you said something a little different.
It was an earworm.
It hit me, right?
I don't think so.
So I'm not going to take responsibility for that flow.
Just when he was getting better, he, when he fell off. No, he hesitated.
Uh huh.
Yeah. He hesitated, he stopped.
No, he stood back on.
He was thinking about that.
No, I was all ready for indivisible. Is that the word?
Yes.
And, and, and he said oh or something. It gave me, I mean, just, and I, there's never hesitation from either side, both of these gentlemen.
I'm going to throw a red flag up.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not going to take responsibility.
We'll have to play it later, but.
Yeah. I need ear, I need a yellow card for now. I need earplugs, I think, you know, I can just be completely in my head. All right, thank you. Agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. I know we have visitors in the audience today. Thank you for being here. If you're here on any particular agenda item and I have not spoken with you, then, and you want to make comments, public comments about any of those agenda items, please do so during a public comment, which isn't this, this is agenda item number four, we're getting to agenda item number six. But I just, I, I don't want, I don't want anybody to not make a public comment thinking that I'm going to open the floor for public comments during those agenda items. I'm not going to, but I do welcome, we all welcome your comments if you have any during public comment. Now, that's public comment, that's two agenda items away. I don't say much, you know, so this is, I'm going to take this opportunity to waste everybody's time.
Go ahead.
This is agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. If there's any member of the public who would like to identify who they are, for the, for the record, you may do so at this time, but there's no compunction or obligation that you do so. Thank you all for being here. I hope that this agenda will go much more smoothly than the last two minutes of me talking has been, but we shall wait and see. So moving on, agenda item number five, Commissioner's Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Lenny, you have the floor, sir.
Oh.
Was it you this morning?
Yes, you're up, sir.
I thought so. Didn't want to fill you off. You just did again. I'm very good at that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Had some just minor calls and, and issues from some constituents took care of. Went to the St. Mary's trunk retreat and also at the expo, the sheriff's office was having one as well, was a big success. There was a ton of people that came out to the expo. It was crazy, but good turnout. They ended up taking all the candy, so that was good. I attended a meeting with the scoring committee and the contractor that was awarded the EOC bill, along with our engineer, Mr. Mercer, working out the details of the bill. I got with Jesse Arredondo about a huge pile of brush at the dead end of Trepto in Blueberry Hill, so look at that, take care of that. What else? Attended the St. James Ball Festival, which is a big success. They had a big bingo and whatnot, it was good. Helped Mr. Guerrero, there was a bunch of tires off of Beagle Road we went and picked up, and a couch off of Car Road that was called in, we went and got that as well. And then I spoke with Commissioner Williams in Live Oak County about some lighting at 37 and 799. I had a constituent that, he drives that way to go to work, and I want to say, within, within a month, he had two head-on collisions at that intersection and walked away from both of them. And so Commissioner Williams, he agreed, he said, there is absolutely no lighting at that, at 37 and 799, so he was going to give a tech shot. And when I talked to him, he called me back within an hour and said the tech stop was going to go out there and follow up with that area. So hopefully they can get some lighting out there. And then I was asked to do the pledges at the courthouse for the Veterans Day celebration and then attended the Veterans Day celebration at St. Mary's Academy that afternoon. Also, there was an issue about, I want to thank Robbie for taking care of this. I know he's been working with them, the Dollar General in Skidmore with the trash issue. Thank you, Robbie, for doing that, because they contacted me as well on it. People dumping their trash outside the dumpsters and whatnot, so Robbie had emailed via corporate and it's being taken care of. Thanks, Robbie, appreciate it. And with that, I will pass to my left.
Thank you, sir. Don't have a whole lot this morning, but I'll lead us down the path here. It's, it's unusual, but there's some illegal hunting going on at night in North B County. We haven't had that situation in many, many years, and I had a call last night and game warrants on it, but evidently times are getting tough again and people are beginning to shoot animals off the road at night. We haven't had this in a long time. I also attended the veterans ceremony here at the courthouse. The sheriff was our guest speaker, Mr. Lenny. Like I said, he did the pledge, I did the prayer. It was well attended. We got through just as it started raining. I mean, it, we'd just finished and it started raining. It held up. I mean, literally. When the last word was done, it started raining and it was time for everybody to leave. We've had no movement on the land transfer or the land request from Real. I have texted them, I have sent them information, asking where they are. I have not got a reply. I don't know where that stands. We'll keep checking back with them. They were really excited about doing that. Commissioner Oliveras and I have spent the day with them, looking at pieces of property that they might could use. They were excited when they left. It could be they're waiting to give us the total package, I don't know, but they haven't heard a word. And let me see, had a meeting in Mineral, current events meeting that we have once a month, brought them up to date on, on everything that's going on that I know about the county. Judge, with that, sir, I will pass.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't really know what to do now. Commissioner, if it is, you have a floor, sir.
All right. The main, the main work we've been doing on precinct three is probably the IT buildout now. I've been out there every day. They poured the concrete last Thursday, so if you haven't gone by there to see the work, or you can go by and see it, that they poured concrete in the front part, the back part, and I think the rain, but we'll take the rain, it's going to hold them up, but they're going to start framing already this week, as soon as it dries up, so they're moving right along. We had one little hiccup, it was corrected right away on the, before the concrete pour, so that got done, but everything is moving really well on that project. Okay? The next one is the, I got an email from Natalie Gonzalez from Grant Works, and I was kind of scared there for a little bit for all the work that we did for the GLO, but she assured me that all the work that Commissioner Oliveras and I did on, and the committee is not going to, is not going to change, so we're moving forward. We're hoping that it will continue that way, because they said there was some, there were some other counties complaining about how the money was distributed out, so they're still looking into that, and I'm going to keep everybody afloat on that thing. So that one was, was real good. ICE Engineering is doing the, all the engineering for the lift station out there at BDA, and they're moving along. They submitted a, I think, a partial request this past week, and they're, they're moving right along. So they're about 40% on their work out there for the, for the lift station, to move forward on that. And then I spoke to Vicente from Tech Stop, and I told him we had a lighting issue on 59 in Ellis Road East, and they're going to go out there and they're going to do a study on it, but we're trying to put a light, but the lights, the poles are just too far back. And people are complaining that, you know, they can't see, I mean, if you get there, dark, you can't see where the turn is, or the people that are coming out, you know, on 59, so it's very dangerous. So they're on it already, and then we had several calls on, on, on Car Road, a potholes out there, and now there's going to be more because of a little bit of rain, but Jesse Arredondo is already on it, so as soon as they dry it up, they'll be taking care of those out there. I have a B Development Authority meeting this evening, and we have a pretty good agenda there. Triga is doing the.
HDB?
Yeah. And they've already gotten, they've got a stockpile. I wish we could take a tour out there and see what they've got going on, but they're really moving on in their production out there. So they're doing well. They're doing really well.
Do they have machines up, do they, are they manufacturing?
They're manufacturing, they're making it there. That's, that's, it's a sight to see there, how we, I don't know how we could get a tour, but safe, pictures, I guess, about the only way, but it's, they're, they're doing really well. And I attended the veterans service here at the courthouse with Commissioner DeWitt and Commissioner Lenny. That was, you know, it was, it was really nice to be there. All right? And with that, I'm going to pass to Commissioner Oliveras.
Good, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. So a little bit of recognition, I'd like to recognize Nick Novus out with Tech Stop. He graciously met with me last week and we identified well over 15 safety concerns in the Skidmore and Tynan area. And, you know, the great thing of working with Nick, we developed an action plan that will help facilitate and mitigate some of these issues, so that's going to be ongoing. So thank you, thank you for coming out and meeting with me, so we appreciate it. There was also having a little, how can I put this, a little contentious with one of our local concrete companies there that we believe is spilling some concrete on the road, but we're, it's, it's difficult to say it's 100% them. However, after through some discussion with them, they're willing to take some accountability and also willing to try and clean it up this week, and that's the plan, hopefully they clean it up. If not, again, thanks to Nick, we're going to work together or maybe work with our county group and do a, do a reset, clean off that intersection, because there are a lot of accidents that are occurring there, and then we'll be able to start a new benchmark to see how much concrete actually falls or doesn't fall. Recognize there are other concrete trucks that pass through there, but it's suspect. We'll leave it at that. On the EOC building, we're making some great progress. Victory is in the process of completing their detailed schedule, should be putting out to us this week. And also they'll have some information as far as the procurement process, the generators, things of that nature, they'll be coming, coming out this week. As far as the appraisal district, received several calls this past week concerning, again, you know, loss of ad use, appraisal values, so planning on setting up a meeting again with appraisal district and see, you know, how these things can, can work out, what can you do to mitigate them, what's real, what's not real. It's a double-edged sword, you know, I'm hearing a lot of positive things with appraisal boards and getting adjusted, but I'm also hearing negative, and somewhere in between has got to be a little bit of a balance. I think some of it has to do a lot with communication, understanding the entire process, and, you know, the individual needs to take a little bit of ownership as well, too. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a little bit complex, but not that complex that I think we can work it out, but a lot of it has to do with communication. We had several calls that are received concerning county roads, one with grass, which they're going to be taken care of. Also received a call from one of the farmers that has a big concern that when one of the adjacent farmers utilizes their pivots and as they're drawing water out, the farm next to it, their sewer lines, water lines are starting to cavitate. So trying to figure out what the real issue is, I'm going to be working with the, I found out that we had a new board, Beville, B County Water District.
Water Conservation.
Water Conservation District. So I reached out to one gentleman that I know, Mr. Baker, so we're going to try and get together, try and understand what those issues are. It might be a simple fix, but it was a new one for me, understanding, you know, the water tables are dropping, dropping too low. Tomorrow I'll be having my second meeting with my mentoring student, with the Barnhart Mentoring Process at Beville ISD, that process is going well. And Commissioner Lenny, thank you, you know, for responding to Facebook on the Dollar General. I've also been in touch with Dollar General that matters. We do have an issue in Skidmore with illegal dumping, something we're just going to continue working at to try and help mitigate some of that, some of that issue, especially with people in a situation we in, you know, high inflation rates. I've actually witnessed dumpster diving in the area, and I guess people are struggling getting food or whatever, so they're going there to get that information. So Commissioner, thank you for responding at Facebook comment, but hopefully it's there. We still have some trash that we need to get picked up locally, that's probably from that same process. And that should wrap it up. I'm going to go back to you, Judge.
Certainly. Off mission, DeWitt.
I, I forgot.
And now for the rest of the story.
The rest of the story, I forgot to give recognition to our maintenance crew, John Izagiri and his crew are setting up and turning down for the veterans ceremony. They did it perfectly, and thank you very much at the last minute for doing that, so thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Yeah, let me make that note. Good job, John. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioner's Court at this time? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Shower? Come on down. Identify yourself for the, this goes for everybody, identify yourself for the record and then tell us what you want to tell us.
Hi, my name is Randy Shower. I am the FCH and 4H extension agent for B County. I just wanted to let y'all know that this last weekend, Veterans Day weekend, I took a group of six B County students to tour Blinn College in Burnham. We, it's a, it's a program through 4H called Crossroads, and the B County Council, through our fundraising, is able to pay for all the participants that would like to go, including volunteers. So anyway, we went and toured the campus, we camped, and saw a lot of really cool IT programs there at the Blinn campus in Burnham. So really excited for those kids, and I just want to let y'all know that they came back and had some cool career ideas, so that's good.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Anybody else like to make a public comment? Yes, sir, come on down.
Hello, my name is James Taylor. My wife and I have a dance studio up the corner of Charco Road and 181. Most of you probably recognize me, but I'm here today to ask for your vote to be on the appraisal district board of directors. And since we've mentioned the dance studio, I'd like to also mention that we're having a show December 16th and 17th at Coastal Blinn College. The public is welcome to come, and it's good to have a show.
At what time is that show?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, December 16th and 17th.
That's Saturday and Sunday.
Tickets are just first come, first served, or?
Well, you buy, first come, first served on the tickets, it's expensive.
There's, are there tickets for sale at the door? Is there a website they could go to?
They're not for sale on a website, but they're on sale at the dance studio starting this Thursday.
Okay.
And you can also buy them at the door.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on down.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dale Adamo. I live over on Orange Lane. I, I'd like to talk to the members about voting for new members on the appraisal district. The appraisal district right now, the system is a little flawed, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I won't get into the numbers or everything, but everybody here, I'm sure, is aware of the numbers that the appraisal district came up with this year, with 2,700 people that complained or filed a contest against it. It just seems that something in the system is very wrong, and I feel that the board members, it needs to be changed. So I would recommend that everybody here reevaluate their position and change the board members on the appraisal district. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Adamo.
Adamo, my apologies.
It's okay.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address Commissioner's Court? Anyone? Am I close? Moving on, agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve or comment?
I have a motion to approve. Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, you have the floor.
Yes, Judge, on the B County bills, and I ask this every year, so Madam Auditor, bear with me, we're paying about $1,300 worth of taxes in Sutton County, to the Sutton County Appraisal District, and that's for land that we, school land that we own in Sutton County.
Yes, sir.
And if memory serves, it's somewhere around 2,000 acres or less than 2,000 acres.
Okay.
To my knowledge, no one from this court has ever gone out there and seen it. We don't know what's on it. I know at one time, early in my career with the court, we were leasing it for hunting. I think there's oil and gas production on it now, and that's where the money comes and goes to the school. Being in West Texas, that would be in your precinct, Commissioner, you have the west part.
That's why you asked the question. I loved it. You, you. Here we go.
Sir, I don't think that's in your district.
Sounds very reasonable. Go ahead.
It does. And you know where Sonora is? Look, you already know.
It's right around the corner.
It's right there. The population is, is a little less than 5,000 people, so you shouldn't have any trouble getting, getting around.
Right.
In all seriousness, I recommend one of us, and if nobody else will, I will, go out there and look at the property. We need to see what's on it or what's not on it.
You just want to go hunting.
No, I'm not a big hunter anymore. I did all that when I was young, tried anything to move, but that's another story. But we need to go out there. We have a piece of property that's, if I, if memory serves, it's around 1,600 or 1,700 acres that we used to lease for hunting. I'm not sure that it's leased anymore.
I don't, I don't know that.
There could be people living on it, there could be buildings on it, it could have 84 oil wells on it. We don't know.
Yeah, I completely agree with you.
We, we need to go.
Commissioner, you want to tell everybody how we acquired that?
I wish I knew, but didn't it come from, do you know, sir?
No.
I, I think, I'm guessing, the 1800s, when Texas started dividing school board land, B County got that land. That's my guess, because it's classified as school land, right?
Uh huh, it, it's for that purpose, for a permanent school fund.
It's for the permanent school fund, and we own the land, and that is my guess, that that was land we were given in the 1800s, and it's been sitting there all this time. Now, if you've ever been to Sonora, there's not a whole lot out there. It takes five or six acres to run a holy toad. I mean, it's pretty dry country.
Excuse me.
Well, I have information in a folder in my office that you're welcome to.
Yes, ma'am, I think you have a large folder, so, and she and I have to have this discussion every year, but I got thinking about it. We need to know what's there. We really do. We may own a hotel, and, I mean, we don't know. If you've ever been to Sonora, if you've ever been to the caverns of Sonora, it's one of the few places where they have the, down in the caverns, they have the straws that come down, that haven't been disturbed. Have you been there, sir?
That's a great, a great.
It is, it is fantastic, it really is. Do you need to go to, anybody want to go? It says your precinct.
I want to go.
Anyway, Judge, that was my opinion. I appreciate it, sir.
No, thank you, that's really interesting. I, I'm looking it up right now, I can't help myself.
Here it is.
And it's too old, it doesn't say. Oh, no, no, I'm looking on county records, I'm looking at the D records. 1,426 acres?
Okay, that's.
1,423 acres?
1,423.
Or 1,426.
I stand corrected, I thought it was around 1,600. Memory fades.
Yeah, no, that thing's.
Sometimes it gets larger.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. Now we're going to start moving really quickly. Just kidding. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Flow so well, agenda item number eight, approved interlocal agreement between B, Live Oak and McMullen Counties regarding the Second Multi-County Court at Law Office tabled during the October 30th, 2023 special called meeting. The, the interlocal should be in the packet. This is something that, once we approve it, we'll get it over to Live Oak and McMullen County. And as we discussed during our budget process, the apportionment of this new office, the costs associated with it, exclusive of the judge, whose salary is paid by the state, we pay his benefits, are going to be apportioned 33% to Live Oak County, 11% to McMullen County, with B County picking up the balance of 56%.
I also noticed that B County would be the county that would take care of all the records and pay, make the payments.
Yes, sir, we're the administrative county by statute, and, but the, the, the actual chambers of the judge will be situated in Live Oak County at their new Justice Center, which is a, a part of the new sheriff's office and jail that they have set up. So there's some available space there that the district judges are allowing.
So we do a motion to approve this, yes?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed?
And I did notice also in the information, it has to be unanimous, so the other two counties are, were all on board.
Yeah. So, motion passes without exception, thank you. Yes, sir. Yes. So we'll sign the front page first, then I'll do the last one next. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number nine, approved voting resolution to cast votes for the B County Appraisal District Board of Directors appointments. Before I open the floor for discussion, in this process, it's going to be a little bit more loosey-goosey than it usually is when we go towards or prepare for and appoint members or individuals to various boards and organizations. In this, in this case, you, you can see on your packet, B County has allocated 1,359 total votes. We can apportion those votes amongst all or any limited number of the nominees. A month or so ago, we added to the nominee list to include additional interested members of the community, some which are present this morning, to serve on this board along with the nominations for the existing board members. I will say, you know, it's kind of an interesting situation. This is recorded, too, so this is going to come back, and, and I'm sure somebody's going to use this against me in the future, but it's important that everybody understands that the appraisal district simply apportions the whole tax base pie, apportions each, each taxpayer's slice or percentage of the entire tax base pie. The taxing entities such as B County, the ISD, we, 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 we pass taxes, and so we levy taxes against that tax base. The tax base fluctuates, and in B County, the tax base in the 13, 15 years I've been back, has fluctuated wildly multiple times, both with respect to commercial property and residential property. I think, I think last year, there was a great deal of fluctuation amongst residential property. Another thing that's popped up a lot has been, and I've, I've seen it personally and with close friends and family members, the appraisal district by state law, right, because the state of Texas controls the appraisal district, B County does not, no other taxing jurisdiction does. We get to appoint the board members, but those board members and, and everybody that's here today that is considering requesting support, you know, your fiduciary obligations will be to that board, that's your role, so you'll take an oath, and that board is going to be subject to the laws of the state of Texas. So oftentimes, when we get upset at taxes, which I, I don't like paying taxes, just like this is why, you know, it's a recorded statement, but I'm just going to go ahead and do it anyway, so I can use it against me in the future when we talk about tax liability that B County wants to assess against its constituents. But, but the, the simple fact of the matter is, in Texas, we, we have an issue with property tax because it is the primary vehicle by which to fund county and municipal government and school districts. School districts routinely and usually are the, the. School districts routinely and usually are the, not near majority, but close to the majority of everybody's annual tax burden. These are taxing entities. Regardless of whether B County has a trillion dollars in tax base or a million dollars in tax base, the tax levy is made by the taxing jurisdiction. So your share of the taxes will adjust based on whether or not you fight your valuations. And that's one of the problems that we've seen in B County is wildly increased valuations that are unsubstantiated, that when you go down and you challenge them, they're automatically reduced. Those challenges are made informally with Richard Navid, who is a contractor who the B County Appraisal District has contracted with for a long time. And so then, the individuals who don't challenge their taxes, they end up unfortunately, and in many cases unfairly, sharing a larger proportionate burden of their tax, of the entire county's tax burden than is fair and justifiable. I don't believe that the changes to the board will make a meaningful immediate difference in that. And I, again, I don't, I don't say that to say that change isn't a good thing. I think change is positive because it brings fresh eyes, fresh ideas, fresh passions to the table. But whatever we end up doing here today, I want to thank King and Amy, Paul and Jess. Are those the only current members? I don't want to leave one off. For their service, it is a, is it Paul? Oh, he's not running.
He's not running.
Yeah, he's been on for a long time. And yeah, I had the fortune of serving with Mr. Looney on another board for many years, and I can attest to his competency and capacity. And I can attest to all of the existing members' competency, capacity, and passion for the community. And so, anything that we do do, at least personally, and I'm pretty sure that all the commissioners here would agree with me, this isn't controversial at all, but I thank them for their service, thank them for their willingness to serve in a very thankless position, regardless of what any of us may think. Anybody that is a member of this board is going to receive a certain measure of derision and consternation from the community. I'm no different. I've written letters to board members in years past with respect to decisions that I thought were unfair, decisions that are made by Richard Navid, not by the Board of Directors. But that is, that's the role that these individuals seek. So oftentimes, we get upset locally about taxes, and we focus our irritation at the wrong level. If you're unhappy with property taxes, you should look to Texas law, and you should look to the state legislature to address those issues. At the county level, the appraisal district board has limited ability to make meaningful changes that will practically impact what we do. But there has been, over the last several years, a lot of anomalies when it comes to valuation of property. And I've seen it. I've seen properties next to each other, rural ranchland property going for, or not going for, being appraised at over $6,500 an acre. And right next to it, the same exact size piece of property, same benefits, same amenities. In fact, it used to be the same tract of land at $4,000 an acre, and there's no justification for that. But sometimes, I think we should all be very careful about which rocks we want to turn over. And oftentimes, for as many of us who complain about our valuations, there are many more of us who quietly say, please don't turn the spotlight on me because I like my valuation, because my valuation is low. So what we're looking to do today is to, is to apportion our votes amongst these fine candidates. I'd like to, you know, I thank the members of the existing Board of Directors. I'd like to thank every individual member of the community that's put their name up for contention in this, in this appointment situation, because it does take a lot to get to the point where you're willing to put your name out there. And I've always said, if you're going to complain about how local government operates, we'll get involved. And so, thank you all for being willing to serve. I do appreciate that as well. Now, my soliloquy has ended. I'll open the floor for y'all's discussion and consideration. Yeah?
I think there's a misconception. I've been approached lots of, lots of ways. And we're only one of 11 voting entities for this. So this Commissioner's Court doesn't make the decision for the whole board over there. We put our votes in, they're going to be pulled into a pool with the ISDs and then mud with the water districts and everything else. So the votes that we cast here, we're not, we're not the ultimate decision on that. And I think some of the people are misled by that or think that. And I just want to make sure that they know that we're only one out of 11 voting. And I think the ISDs are the ones that have the biggest, is that right? We do? I do, okay, they're the votes.
Because they're proportionately, they have a smaller role countywide. It's just in their districts, their tax levy.
So that's, that's my.
Judge, I have a few words if I could. And I echo exactly what you say. Appreciate these folks wanting to step up to the plate. It's very, very unusual to have this many folks want to get into an organization like that that is viewed with disdain by so many people. And to put yourselves out there and say, okay, I want to be one of those people, is appreciated. This normally doesn't happen. Usually, when there's a vacancy on the board, the court's asking people, would you like to serve on the board?
Struggling to find the volunteers.
Yes, we're struggling. And we found some in the past. And Judge, if we're ready for a motion, I will make a motion.
I have one.
Okay.
Comment as well, for good.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Judge, very well articulated. The role as county commissioner and servant of public is a little bit new, but not in a corporate world. Level heads prevail whenever we get into contentious situations. Similar to this. One of the big findings with the appraisal district, as you mentioned earlier, there's an array of issues that are coming up. And a lot of it is lack of understanding, process, procedures, things that are taking place. I've been fortunate enough to hear both sides of the story from constituents that are saying, my appraisal value is way too high. They make a protest, the values get worked out in a equitable way. They're happy, case closed. I personally looked at some other values, and they are overinfluated. Exactly how much, don't know. I mean, we can speculate and we can come up with numbers. But then there's the flip side of the coin, as you mentioned earlier. I have a lot of other individuals that, as you said earlier, you know, they really, hey, just leave me alone, I'm okay, because their properties have been way undervalued. So they're not going to jump to the table, hey, I want to pay more taxes, you know? So it's a bit difficult. And learning this whole process for me has been very, very enlightening, very informative. However, I do believe that, you know, there needs to be some change. I think that's open for discussion, how we do that. And you're exactly right. The court does not make these changes. There's a bigger process behind this. And we can argue till we want to face that we want to change these appraisal values. It's not coming from us. It's not coming from the county. It's at a much higher level. The key thing is, you know, yes, you do need to protest those taxes. And if you don't go, well, like I mentioned earlier, you know, it's almost like dealing with any other personal issues. You have to take initiative to manage your own personal favors, and that's one of them. It's been very, very enlightening, this decision on trying to figure out, you know, how do we want these votes to go? It's been a little bit tough. You know, I have had an opportunity to meet the new individuals that are running. I have not had the opportunity for people on the board. I don't know them. They may be great people as far as I know. But it's hard to vote against someone that's, in hearing, they're doing a good job, but I have no personal knowledge. This is all through hearsay. So it makes it, you know, just being open and honest here is, how do you vote against someone if you really don't know that they've done a bad job? I do recognize that we do need to make some changes in the appraisal district, maybe challenge that overall process and get that done. But there's a systematic way that this needs to be done and not just go in and bulldoze everything and do a complete change of it. Those are just some thoughts. Again, I appreciate your earlier comments. I think you're spot on with everything you're saying. It's been enlightening to me, for the people that I'm supporting out there. We do need to do some different things. We do need to enhance, you know, how do we get companies to come in, to enhance our overall community, bring companies in? Is the tax is the only thing that's preventing companies from coming in? I don't think so, but it is a part of the equation. So all these things to make B County a better place, these are just one, one part of it. On the flip side of that, as the judge articulated earlier, you did such a great job, you're hard to follow on you, is that, you know, the other side of it is, now, we need new roads. We need this, we need that, we need that. And that doesn't come for free. It comes at a cost. And, you know, we're just going to have to work through it. And then working with other entities, like I did with Tech dot, you know, they have some additional funding that they're going to try and help the county out as well, which is great. But those are the kind of synergies that we've got to develop on creating a super win for B County as a whole, not just one piece of it or certain area. We'll continue on with.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My, my only comment, getting back to the actual board, is whoever is on that board, I don't want, I don't want them to be basically just rubber stamp, put things through. I want a board that's going to ask questions. And so, I'm not saying that the current board does not do that, but I agree with Monsieur Levadas. And we, we do need a change. Maybe not a full change, but a change. And then what Judge said about, you know, fresh eyes and new passions and new, new looks at things and whatnot, that could be a good thing. Not necessarily what we have is a bad thing, but it could be a good thing. And I want, I said, I want a board that's going to question things, not just let things go through without questioning what's going on. Or if they find, if the board finds something that is not being done correctly, you know, don't just be silent about it and let it go on through. Question why it's happening, you know? And it could be that the board is misunderstood, you know? And, well, board, here's the, here's the Texas law on this. Okay, well, I get it now. But question it, and that's what I want.
Education.
So do we have an idea if we might want to?
Judge, I have a, I have a motion I'd like to put forth to the Commissioner's Court.
Yes, sir.
And, and my motion, I feel like that there is going to be a majority of the board that are going to be new folks. I really do. But I also feel there needs to be some continuity with some folks that know about the rules and regulations of state law. Also, this court put somebody on that board about a year and a half ago, Mr. Paul San Miguel. He came before the court in his scrubs. He works at the hospital, very passionate. I have two names I'd like to give to the court with the, the amount of votes I'd like to give to each one. Mr. Jess Staples, 834 votes, and Paul San Miguel, the remaining 524 votes. That is my motion, sir.
That is all of our votes?
That's all of our votes. We have 1,359 total.
And so, 834 for Staples?
And 525 for Paul San Miguel.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second. Further discussion? This would be the point, yeah, if you want to jump up and say, no, I think we ought to do a different apportionment or add more things?
Yes.
Something like that.
Going on a play.
Again, as I was mentioning earlier, you know, doing a deep dive and really understanding, I think, you know, it doesn't hurt to have a fresh set of eyes to come in and maybe challenge some of the existing process. So, you know, with that being said, there's some additional individuals that came and presented themselves and had some discussion with me that I think, you know, could be a value added to the current board. And maybe, you know, and I understand how the numbers work. You know, we're limited on what we have, and, you know, you don't want to waste a lot of votes. So that's all, that's all gets caught up in the noise. You know, since the motion is made with these two, it's just open for discussion of other people that should come on the board, Judge?
Yeah, we're discussing right now, because when I call a vote, it'll be up or down.
Okay. Yeah, there's, there's some, you know, some other candidates that I think have, you know, the potential, if it's approached right, the right questions are asked, and you have the right demeanor on getting down to the understanding how things can happen. One of those gentlemen is Mr. James Taylor. I think he has enough courage to challenge the board. The other is, in our agreement with you, is Paul San Miguel. I think he would be another one, you know, through some enhancement could, could also help. Couple of others that, you know, that are out there to consider, potentially consider, would be, you know, Ernie Hurst. He does have a background in real estate. And then there's a Mr. Keeney as well, who has, you know, knowledge around the government side as far as processing procedures. I struggle a little bit as far as, you know, how the ratio should go and where should it be. A lot of it has to do, and I've seen it in the corporate world, is sometimes you can have some of the best people in place, but if you don't have the people skills to work with different entities and different governments, things will get locked and we don't, we don't progress. So that's, that's pretty important to me. So those are the three names I like to throw out there as well for consideration, something to think about or have a discussion with.
Good.
Yeah, please.
Commissioner? If you wanted to keep one of the board members, like you said at the beginning part there, if you kept your votes, you wanted to keep Jeff Staples on there, stay 34, and then divide the other votes among the other candidates that Commissioner Levadas has, or consider them? Would we not spoil those votes, or?
In my opinion, you would. You would spoil the votes if you start dividing them up.
We've got 10, 10 other entities as well, and those values are.
And I'll go back to my original statement. It's hard to say in government, but there's no doubt in my mind that there's going to be three of the new members on the board. I think that's the way it's going to go. I've talked to people in the other voting districts, and they're all impressed with these folks, and they're, they're supporting them. I'm back on continuity and people that know the rules. And it's like, okay, you get all new Commissioner's Court members, all pilots. We don't know anything. We don't know where the restrooms are. We don't know anything. You keep somebody in there that knows what's going on. A former board member recommended Jeff Staples stay. He's tight, he knows what's going on. And then I go back to Mr. San Miguel. We put him on there. I'm not sure how it would look, but we put you on there, but we don't really want you on there now. All of these other folks that we really don't know how they're going to be on the board want to be on there, and we want to replace you with them. And you've been doing a good job. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on those two, honestly. All these folks can do the job. Don't get me wrong. Anybody can do this job, but there's a learning curve. And when you're dealing with other people's money and taxes and protests, I don't think it's a good idea to start with everything fresh.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm surprised we don't stag or alter, you know, kind of a split.
Me too. Like, that's three this year, two the next year, whatever.
You're right. And I mean, even though I bring a vast amount of knowledge to the court, there's still some processes within the government and just the local county that I'm, you know, that I'm still getting learned caught up on, you know, so. But I'm improving, you know, improve fast. But maybe, Commissioner, you think maybe, is there a possibility of a hybrid to these votes? You know, maybe not everyone, but maybe, you know, keep some core members and also some, maybe bring in some, some new people to help move some of that forward. And that could be splitting the vote, but we want to do the best thing for the county at the end of the day.
To repeat myself, there's no doubt in my mind, there's five members on the board. Three of them are going to be brand new. Okay, it takes 834 votes to put somebody on the board, period. Okay, we've got enough to put one person on there for sure and then support somebody who we asked to be on the board before. That's, that's where I'm coming from. Because I think these folks are going to be on there. I don't know who.
That sounds pretty confident that the other entities on the.
I do.
No, I'm pretty sure.
I, I really do.
Yeah, I've had a lot of conversations.[1756.63]
I really do. And, you know, they've gone to the other board, I think y'all have gone, correct me if I'm wrong, just about every taxing authority and talked to them, and they vetted y'all, they've looked at you, and that's what I think.
So I got two members that are pretty confident that we'll get three new members. So that's pretty high.
I really believe that. It's kinda like the constitutional amendment for the home state exemption, I think it's gonna pass. So we went ahead and put it in.
What does it say that the one for the judges extending the minimum and the maximum that that was not passed?
That was on the age from seventy-five to seventy-nine years old.
Right.
And it didn't pass. I think they're watching what's happened in Washington and thinking, oh, gosh, we don't want that to happen here.
Yeah.
Anyway.
They didn't realize it's because we're short judges, that's why they went to extend it.
Yeah, and it, yeah, and it's increased the minimum age that they can retire to seventy-four.
The timing was bad.
Commissioner Lynn? I agree. Paul San Miguel, he is a good board member. Yes, we did put him on. He is one of the five that, he does ask a lot of questions. And he's a good one to have. I talked to Amy Guyton, she'd called, I called her initially before anybody had come forth expressing their interest, and after she wanted to be on the board again, and she just, she wasn't sure. She said, I just, I think there's gonna be a new slate of people and I just don't think that I would fit very well. So she just expressed that she wasn't really interested in it anymore. Personally, I would like to see Paul San Miguel stay and Ernie Hurst and Mr. Taylor. And I get what you're saying and agree that, you know, you don't wanna, and I don't want to use the word waste votes, but you don't wanna waste votes, you know, if you know, but we don't know for sure, but if you know somewhat for sure that other members are gonna get on there, you know, and we're, we can put our votes towards someone else, you know, I get that. But you're asking my opinion, and my opinion is I'd like to see Paul stay, and I'm good with Ernie or Mr. Taylor.
Judge, I call the question.
Okay, I have a motion to call the question, do I have a second? I have a second to call the question, any further discussion? I just asked for confirmation, does everybody have an opportunity to say what they wanna say at this stage? We do have a pending motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to call the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, question is called. So we'll go to the underlying motion, the motion to, I'm gonna misstate how you said it, but the motion to apportion our thirteen hundred and fifty-nine votes on this nomination to the B County Grazer District, to eight hundred and thirty-four votes to Jess Staples and five hundred and twenty-five votes to Paul San Miguel. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I have no other options, did you say aye or?
I was on a bubble here, Judge, and so I guess I'm at a point now I'm gonna oppose as well.
You're opposed as well?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, y'all. All right, all vote aye, motion passes three to two. Thank you all. Like Commissioner DeWitt said, I have a feeling you are going to be on the board, and I wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors. Moving on, agenda item number ten, approve appointments to the B Development Authority Board of Directors. We have terms ending on Commissioner Farias and Mr. Patel, both of our, both of these appointees of ours, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Farias are on the executive board, are you?
Yes, sir.
And what is your role?
I am the media director, I mean, the treasurer.
Okay, so Commissioner Farias is the current treasurer and?
The vice, Pete Patel is the vice chair.
Vice chair is Mr. Patel. I do keep up to date with what's going on at the BDA through both Mr. Patel and Commissioner Farias, I think they're doing an excellent job. I would open the floor for nominations and I would nominate Commissioner Farias and Mr. Patel for their positions for another term.
And they both?
Yes, sir, yeah, they're both a hundred percent invested. Any other nominations? Any other kind of motion to close?
Motion to close, thank you.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. And Commissioner Farias and Pete Patel, thank you, you are reappointed by acclamation. Thank you for your service, we look forward to see continued growth and opportunities out there at the BDA under the leadership now of Mr. Domingo's, former City Bville Mayor, so I think it's a really good team you have out there.
Yes, it is, it's very much so.
Excellent. Moving on, agenda item number ten, I'm sorry, agenda item number eleven, approved commercial service HVAC maintenance plan agreement between Carrier and B County for the county courthouse.
I'm moving to approve with a couple of comments, Judge, second.
I have a motion and a second, Commissioner DeWitt, you have the floor.
Looking at the service agreement, we had a five-year agreement with them before to be renewed, but I noticed that when it's being renewed, it's only gonna be one year.
Year to year.
Instead of five years, do we?
I thought the same thing, Commissioner, and I was thinking, is it time, and I know this is an automatic renewal situation, is it time for us to take this back out for bid? Because I noticed in 2018, the total value of the contract was forty-five thousand.
Right.
So I presume that if we go out now, five years later, or six years later, that we're probably going to have to go out for, it's gonna exceed that threshold, that we can't just single source it, we have to go through that process.
We can, I know Carrier is, I don't wanna say a single source, but it's pretty limited, and I know Mr. Zegarden can attest to that, that our vendor Carrier is, there's a limited pool for this service. But we can, of course, we can go out for bid anytime.
Well, if you would, in the agreement renewal, it says for additional like term, which would be five years.
Yeah.
Judge, see, that's what.
I thought it was year to year.
Yeah, it did say, I saw a year also.
But up here, it says agreement renewal, it says for additional like term.
That's a little problematic.
It is, especially when they wanna charge eighty-eight, twenty per year.
Well, we were paying eighty, we were paying a little less than that before, eighty-four something, I forget, but in my opinion, I'd like to talk to them about five years. John, correct me if I'm wrong, they've done a great job, they come and we need them, and, you know, as we get further down the line, they know exactly what's going on, and to try to go out and get a third party, another party?
Does the term start in November?
Yeah, it's starting at November one to September thirtieth for this one year is what I saw.
Could we, could we talk to them about five instead of one year or not?
I just don't know what happens right now if we're out of contract.
Yeah, we're in a contract.
We could go ahead and approve the one year and talk to them, okay, can we add four more to it?
That I think is.
Yes, that I think is.
I just feel kinda bad, as soon as we table it, the heater will go down.
Exactly, and they say, oh, you don't have a contract. Judge, my motion would be to go ahead and approve the one-year extension and talk to them about another four years and come back to us for that.
I know, I'm in my second to that.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you do that one year and look at those options, do you think we'd be obligated for the next four, or that would open up the window?
That's still up to us to decide when that comes in. We say, oh, we're not gonna do it, it's too expensive, we can make that decision.
That way we don't be locked in.
And this gets us, it keeps it operating for John.
Oh, that's a big one.
Yes.
Sound okay, Mr. Zegarden? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number twelve, approved expo request for auditorium fee waiver from Bville Ladies Night Out for their annual fundraiser on February thirteenth, 2024. Ms. Hugh Garrett, you've been so patient, thank you so much, do you have any presentation you'd like to provide?
No, I just wanted to be here to thank you for your time and in the past for y'all's approval if you had any questions.
Wave the fee, Judge.
I have a motion and everybody else is seconded.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all for everything you do, Bville Ladies Night Out is an excellent organization that provides meaningful improvement to our local hospital, I can't tell you how much that means to me and to so many of our local constituents, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank y'all for your support.
And you throw a mean party, too.
It's a good one.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number thirteen, approved expo request for auditorium and arena fee waivers from the Texas Department of Transportation for their annual safety banquet on February twenty-nine, 2024.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion and multiple seconds. Brittany, take your pick.
Commissioner Lynn.
Commissioner Lynn, one. Wow, Commissioner Farias. No whammies.
No whammies.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number fourteen, presentation of Tech Dot's in-the-street campaign given by Nick Novasad, P E Tech Dot Karnes City Area Engineer. Mr. Novasad, you have the floor.
I appreciate y'all having me today. We're here giving a fee waiver, wanted to take opportunity to talk about our in-the-street campaign, don't know how many people are aware of that, but, you know, our last death this day on Texas Road was November seventh, two thousand, that day is not easy to fix that, I'm not, that I'm proud of, or anybody should be proud of, right? That's a very bad street to be on, so we've been always having a campaign on the anniversary of, during the anniversary month, and so since we're in November, wanted to pay a little public service announcement and then speak on this a little bit and what we can do. And, hang on, audio muted. Thank you.
I thought you were gonna say that's crazy, we don't have a flat top or a flat screen. We own a card for the Commissioners' Court.
It's time to upgrade. They're now eighty-five and eighty-six inches up there for a thousand bucks.
Telling you all those screens are not that expensive.
They have.
Yeah.
We have them.
I only pay like two little bucks for one of my classes, it's a bit.
I'm not sure why the, I'm just one of the speakers, I'm not sure. You know, it's still.
I'm getting married, but sadly, they may never see these milestones. At least one person has died every single day on Texas roads since two thousand, every day. Child may perish, a spouse doesn't come home. When you die today, stay focused on what you want, drive responsibly, aim for the street that takes the chance, you may go to Texas, but it's in the street.
As I say, it's something, you know, we review every fatality crash in our area, so any fatality happens in B County, Karnes County, Goyla County, I'm involved in, and we review those to see if there's anything we can do to make things safer and stuff. So I appreciate the Commissioners, I've been dealing with all of you, you know, looking at speed limit reductions or lighting or anything like that, you'll bring, you know, issues and restrictions brought to y'all, and so I say, I appreciate that, and I say I think it's a team effort for us to do this. I would think it's over ninety percent of fatalities and a lot of our crashes actually are due to driver behavior. So until we educate, and that's what I'm trying to do here a little bit, is educate the public and everybody that, you know, the choices we make and our driving behaviors, you know, texting and driving, you know, we're still having an enormous amount of people not using seatbelts. Whenever we do those fatalities, that is a, that's horrible, because a lot of these could be avoided if they were putting seatbelts on, the drinking and driving, you know, there's so many ways to, you know, to get sober at home and stuff like that now. And so when you see those, those are very disheartening, you know, you see that kinda stuff, because those are things we can change, those are lives that probably still be here today if those steps are taken. And so I say, part of this is educating, you know, we gotta try to change driver behavior. There are some of those things, yes, there's engineering stuff we can do and try to engineer out some of it, you know, but there's also a lot of it that's, you know, each one of us, a challenge for everybody to go home and share with their wife and with their kids or grandchildren, somebody like that, right? And, you know, if everybody shares it with a couple people, and those couple people share with a couple people, you know, eventually we get this message out, hopefully, hopefully we can't even touch one person, that's maybe one life change, you know what I mean? So, you know, really, really just focusing on driver behaviors and what are we doing, you know, if we talk about speed, are we speeding, you know, we talk about putting the cell phone down, but are we using our cell phone when we're driving, you know? And really just doing internal look on ourselves and what we're doing, you know, and trying to send a good example for our kids. You know, I got kids in my car with me, right? I put a cell phone, you know, I pick a cell phone up, you think, you know, they're gonna pick theirs up, right? When they start driving, right? Just kinda thinking about that type of stuff, right? And, you know, just trying to share that message. I said, I'm not sure how many people actually have heard it, in the street campaign, but I wanted to make sure we can get it out there, so you're in the street, that's what we're talking about, we're really trying to curb this trend we got. We're averaging over ten, I think we're up to twelve, thirteen fatalities on Texas roads every day, every day, ten every day, over ten. And so that's like wiping some of these communities, our area often happens every year. That's, I mean, that doesn't open somebody's eyes a little bit, actually, right? I mean, that's three thousand, three thousand some of our, I mean, a fair chunk of our community, so we're a small town, I mean, we're all very, very rural, so I say, that's a staggering number. And I say, I hate reviewing these when they're local, and I'd rather do them in our three county areas, you know, I have to take those to heart, and I say, I hate that, say some of these things, you know, it shouldn't happen, right? There's what they're, it's not senseless things or decisions we're making, so. Just wanted to share that with you guys and say, I know y'all hear a lot of people, y'all have things that we can try to work on our end, please reach out to me like y'all have been doing, I appreciate that very much, for the Commissioners here, we've worked, I think we've worked very well together, and I appreciate everything y'all do to help, you know, look at safety issues in the county and do, you know, try to help it from that end, but also try to help us educate the community as well, and try to share the message so we can try to, in the street.
Is that shareable on Facebook?
It is, if you actually go to industry and check that out, there's a lot of shareable Facebook type of posts or shareable different type of links on there, so, yes, there's a whole bunch of the PSAs and everything on there, so, and say, if, you know, if people from the extension office and things like that, you know, sharing with Forbes groups and those kids and anybody we can share with, you know, and trying to educate them, it's changing something, right? Something's gotta change. It is just a bad path we're headed down, it's just, it's not good. I appreciate your having me.
Thank you, Mr. Novasad, I'd just like to, and I know I share the, I'm surprised I wasn't able to get this out before my Commissioners jumped in, but I'd just like to commend you and thank you, and I know it's Tech Dot, I know y'all have policies, but you individually have been such a resource to my Commissioners and to this county. Every time we've had a need, you've been there, and it does not go unnoticed, so thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
It was a really valuable relationship.
Those hand hands, I say, y'all are always there to bring you something, I say, I think y'all, you know, are absolutely very responsive, and I say, are every guy, all the guys in the community and y'all's forefront, and it's always, never mind, I say, it's always, you know, you're, I say, editing on you, it's a phenomenal job, and I say, a lot of issues in my department, y'all handle a lot of that stuff, too, so I appreciate that. So thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Nick, thank you for what you do, I mean, this past week is a great example of what Tech Dot brings to the table to help mitigate some of these problems, those numbers are pretty astonishing when you look at that, especially, you know, what I'm seeing just locally and how many fatalities that I'm having to run across, I believe.
I'd say, I appreciate you reaching out to me, since I drive that area, I've probably a couple times a week, go over to Quark, just for, please, hang on that, some of the issues you bring up, I don't always, you know, you know, sometimes a fresh set of eyes and, you know, community members voicing concerns, it helps, it helps bring some of those issues to light, and with him, we can run studies and, you know, see what trends are, we can pull those crash reports and really study, diagnose what's going on, try to see what we can do to fix those issues. And so I appreciate that, I say, all of y'all, I think we really brought stuff up in the corner area and, you know, what do you want, and I say, I think Mr. Chris, we've probably done a lot of stuff together, so.
Yes, sir.
I say, I say, all of y'all, I say, y'all have all done, done all the job, bringing stuff up to me, so I appreciate all of that.
It's one of those things, and I really appreciate, Mr. Novasad, we've been under bridge, we're looking at a bridge and the drainage going under a bridge, I mean, the guy will go anywhere and do anything, just ask him for help and he's standing there ready to go, so thank you, thank you for what you do.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. All right, thank you, Judge, sir. Moving on, agenda item number fifteen, approved land donation to B County in Pettis, Texas, Commissioner DeWitt.
We have an opportunity, gentlemen, I had a phone call from a attorney in Santa Antonia, lady owns half interest in a half acre behind our community center and fire department in Pettis, and they wanted to donate it to B County. And I talked to him, I said, well, who owns the other half? And he gave me the name and I have the information. Judge, they've given us a lot of thought, we have several options, we could go, we could say, okay, we'll tentatively talk to you about your half, we want to talk to the other people, but the more I thought about it, I wanted to recommend. other people. But the more I thought about it, I want to recommend to the court and I will pro bill for discussion, that we go in and accept this half interest. I've been by the property several times and looked at it. It's perfect for a new JP office. It's right behind the fire department. It's on the corner. It's a corner lot. It hasn't been touched in a hundred years, literally. When you look at the trees and vegetation, it's just sitting there. No one's done anything with it. The, the deeds are in the nineteen twenties and one thing and another. I'm not sure how it all happened, but it's just been sitting there. And half interest is in this lady and half interest is in other people that are in Santa Antonia. And the taxes are paid on it. I think what has happened because of the property valuations, they're sitting there thinking, you know, why am I paying on this? I'm not gonna do anything with it. Why don't we just give it to the county? So Judge, my, my move right now, my motion is to go ahead and, and interact with these, this Jay Randall Patterson, this attorney, and say, we'll accept this property and at the same time, reach out to the other side and say, okay, we're accepting a half interest. We'd like for you to donate your half interest to us and see what happens. Now, I'm, I'm open for discussion. Y'all know a lot, and you're, you know, you know a lot more about this than I do. But I hate to pass up on a piece of property that's right there that we can use.
Sound like a great idea. The only question comes to mind is that other half, what happens?
Well, it's kind of like if you and your brother own a piece of property together and each of you own half, which half do I own? Don't know. So, okay, I've, I've got my half and I want to, I need your half, or I want to buy your half, or will you give me your half? And, but half is better than none. And if they say, well, we're not gonna get ready for nothing, we still own half. And eventually it could come to us.
The only other question, Commissioner, I like the idea by the way. I think that's great we can get it. This from a liability standpoint, that's where we need to lean on our expert here. Does that create any kind of liability, you know, down the road? By having half the interest, if that half happens, I have something, you know, to be accountable for.
Though, I mean, the practical, practical issue is it would require some mowing, maintenance, even as a, so in, in Texas, you can have, you know, invited interests and land. So one half uninvited interest means exactly what Commissioner DeWitt said, is we own one half of everything. We would own one half of everything. And the, whoever the other interest owners, they would own cumulatively one half of the same. So there's not a line you can draw on a piece of dirt that says, this is ours and this is theirs. There's a legal process for that through partitions. I had to partition the, the undivided interests into separate interests. But, you know, as far as, as, as liability, you know, I don't, you've driven by the law. I mean, there's no...
You can't mow it. It's, it's, it's like this. It's trees and brush. You can't mow it.
That's what, the history is there just smiling.
Now, he can trim trees up. Now, now, bush mower, or hand mower.
No power?
Next to it is our fire department. There's a road. Okay, there is a residence on the east side. But that's it. That's all that's on that property is that half acre and another half acre, which is a residence. It's as far enough back from the fence and all that if a tree were to fall, it would, it's a residence.
Fire department's here, right? Sure.
Yeah. It needs to be where six twenty-three is. We own everything back past, including where the fire department is.
It's just that section. I, I don't see downside. This may just be, bless you.
True.
Bless you, bless you, bless you.
Thank you.
This, this may create a flood of free land gifts.
Absolutely.
And I don't know that I'm opposed to that either.
Well, I've, I've been doing this since I was with Parks and Law. We got one in Rock port this way. Judge, I'll make a motion that we accept this half, this half interest. And also that we direct a letter, if you would, sir, from the county judge's office to the other landowner expressing interest in their, their half interest. I think it would be better coming from the county judge than from the commission.
Well, we don't know who that is yet.
I have, I have that information.
P. S.
Yes, I do.
Excellent. I have a motion. I have a second. Thank you, Commissioner, for the votes. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception.
And I'm assuming that a, a letter can be generated in your office to this attorney?
Yeah, I'll speak with Mr. Patterson. I know him very well. Great guy.
He's saying new.
Yes, sir.
So we highly owe you some.
It's what you paid the big bucks for.
That's gotta be.
Moving on to agenda item number sixteen, approved project management agreement between Oasis River Authority and B County regarding the Texas General Land Office allocation of community development block drain mitigation funds for the Resilient Communities Program table during the October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three special call meeting. I don't believe there's anybody here present on behalf of Oasis River Authority. I'm just gonna fall on the sword. It's entirely my fault that I haven't moved the, the ball forward on this one. I did communicate with, in, in, in our, last week, I don't believe, did they reach out to you at all?
Just the email that we all received. And I read that. And I did send that to Sandpat County Auditor and asked how they did it. And I did forward that to you this morning because I received that earlier this morning.
You need to summarize it for us.
And he said that it was their legal counsel, the course legal counsel that directed that move, but that admins can be, of course, bid out or not. It's a professional service and exemption, discretionary exemption two six two point two point zero two three five. It gives, gives the court that exemption if we want to go professional service, which this is a professional service. The county's just used to going out for bid with the service, but it's not required by law.
Okay. So the concerns that we had initially have been resolved?
Yes.
Well, that's true.
I'll move to approve and do a couple of comments.
I have a motion. You have a second? Commissioner, do it again.
Uh, the comments, I'll say, payment amount, B County should pay the authority thirteen thousand four nine nine eighty-seven from grant money. Other projects, B County should pay the authority five percent of grant money received from funding agencies. And the authority will generate invoices based on percentage of petitions to your office. The projects that I noticed on their recommended distance flood mitigation action for B County was the Silver Creek Bridge, forty-seven thousand dollars, that is Mission Oliver and Blue Bridge. Then there's a countywide drainage master plan study, five hundred thousand, but it also includes Sandpat, material, Live Oak, Golet and Karnes County. And I think if we're gonna have to have a point of contact for that one, we're gonna look at community affairs, our flood plain administrator, Mr. Robbie Gueretto, emergency management, Mr. Ryan Garza. Then there's another one here. It's kind of interesting, B County Emergency Warning System. B County and the city of Bville's capacity to make warnings and emergency information is limited to a sirene in Bville's city limits. That would also probably go to the community affairs, emergency management. But that one is kind of interesting because the two hundred fifty thousand for about five counties. Well, I don't have a clue what that is. But one sirene in the city, somebody's gonna have to tell everybody what the sirene's for. Anyway, that's, those are my options.
Thank you. And just briefly on the motion, when we, when we talked about this at the last time, and I apologize, I just completely forgot. And then I know you have, you have a question too or a comment. But if, in, before you amend, or if that's the will of, of you, Commissioner DeWitt, for the votes, I would ask for the flexibility to make revision to the contract. Mr. Prustine, I've already talked about it. Just to ensure that payment of the periodic, make, make, just to make sure the periodic payments are tied to receipt of funds, not an obligation, a bare obligation as it currently is drafted of the county regardless of whether or not we're awarded. I, I just forgot about that from last time.
That's amended my motion. It allows the county judge to alter with said contract that he feels that...
Oh, thank you, Commissioner DeWitt. You were saying, okay, so we have an amended motion, amended section. Commissioner, if any, it's...
So five percent, is that a, five percent that they charge every town? Or is it just this town? Is it negotiable?
There's an award.
If there's an award of some sort.
That five percent...
It comes out of the grant, the grant money.
Yes, sir.
Just like any of our admins would, that we have to have an award for that to go forward. And that's what these provisions Judge just mentioned, to protect us. And we're not just paying on...
But yeah, there's no, you imagine, we just want to make sure there's no obligation in it already. It's like, hey, you owe this thirty grand.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, we have amended motion, amended second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. And thanks, Mrs. Canty, for that update. Agenda item number seventeen, approved co-logic annual agreement for the sheriff's office?
Move to approve and a couple of comments.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner, what do you have for?
Uh, on page seventeen eight says renewal terms start date eleven fifteen twenty-three, but on the signature page, it shows nine fourteen twenty-three. This needs to change.
Yes, sir. Get that down.
Uh, I think the sheriff's office is represented here. Is this acceptable with y'all, sir?
Yes, sir. We presented it. It's like, it used to be cop sequence, mobile data terminals in our cars that help dispatch, we didn't dispatch, we can run license plates and driver licenses and communicate and be sort of, and it's true.
Is there gonna be a public kiosk?
I noticed there's a substantial discount. The price was twenty-five-two and because of the discount, I'm sure because of the equipment, software is already here, the total of the county is gonna be thirteen thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
This is an annual agreement. It's just that because this year, rather than just a renewal, it's a, a contract. And I've learned that, from that eagle fling that I'm now on a side contract, so that's why we're here.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Kudos from the auditor's office.
Write that one down.
Oh, no, we're telling you.
This on the...
Me and Randy are friends.
It was my eagle fling. Anyway, I, I appreciate your discount.
Any further discussions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number eighteen, approved Trinity Food Services Annual Agreement for the Sheriff's Office.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Any questions or concerns from Sheriff's Office?
Well, it's, it's been a rough and tumble, tumble relationship. We're working through it. We're happy with him so far. We want to renew another year. I, I want to say there's a six percent increase. That's just inflation. We're working through it. We'll get it taken through.
And we did increase the budget slightly. I don't know if we increased this much, but we'll, we'll look at that towards the end of this year or sooner.
And they're following the calorie?
Oh, we're, we're, we're...
Yes.
The, there were some issues when we went from years ago homemade food to cert, food service food, where we almost had some riots. And changing to this one wasn't much better. But we increased the chowder, the, the calorie intake, I want to say eight hundred calories with the state mandates. So we're doing it.
If we could, Commissioner, some of y'all weren't here when we did the initial contract on the drill around. Company came in and, and, and like I said, we were making homemade food, good food, but it was expensive. Company came in with portions, cup of this, cup of that, one of these, one of those. And that's where part of the problem came in. Wasn't fine enough for some of these hungry rats. And they started increasing, but it saved us a pile of money over the years. It really helped.
Two hundred thousand.
Hundreds of thousands.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
It wasn't a smooth transition.
No, they were.
Did you get the beans fixed? That's all I remember.
Still working on it.
Yes, they, they...
Did you get that bean issue?
I, did you see a picture?
No, I heard, I heard.
I can't get it out of my mind either.
They're just sprouts.
Yeah, they're just sprouts.
They're just sprouts. They do look all white.
Liability and dedication. And we answered to, we have a sheriff's office, we're a little different, other agencies, we answered several different agencies, including the Texas, Texas gentleman.
Okay.
So was it, was it just a portion or was it a taste of the...
Well, it was the change. Anytime you change, think about, think about, you're eating homemade food, now you go to cafeteria at school.
Yeah.
Rather than the ladle full, you get four ounces, they turn it to top. It's exactly four ounces.
I mean, that's it. No, no extra. Nope, you don't come back for seconds. This is it.
That's a whole lot of extra calories than what the state...
Yes, we, I want to say we're eight hundred or a thousand calories more than it used to be.
Since the initial contract, for sure.
We started, uh, we started several hundred calories above the state mandate and we increased that just a little bit.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing considering which I'm running now the epidemic that we're under with diabetes. So maybe that'll help.
Well, and there's something else involved here. You don't want to encourage people to stay in jail because the food is so good. Think about it. But you have to provide a meal as hell.
Start just so they can sleep.
There you go.
There you go. All good, all good points. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number nineteen, approved election administrators request to amend Fund Thirty-Five Elections Discretionary Fund budget to cover its costs to additional pulp pads as cost is higher than anticipated. Ms. Warnix, this is your agenda item. This one's gonna require some discussion before we have a motion. So Ms. Warnix, please make your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Laura Warnix, Elections Administrator. Due to some legislation rules that came out after budget was put in and so forth, we are needing to purchase two additional pulp pads. When I got the bid in on the pulp pads, it was considerably higher than our previous purchases, which is what I would have thought that it would have been. I, my Fund Thirty-Five is not discretionary. That's my contracted fund. And although the, the election payment is usually at the expense of the county, I, we have some funds in there that I'm willing to use if the court allows me to purchase these two additional. The legislation now requires you to use exactly the same fund. Anything that's available on the inside, you have to be able to provide to the curbside and so forth. And we've been using pulp pads, but some of our sites, especially with the upcoming year, are gonna be busy with another. So we need to send extra pulp pads so that once out at curbside, we can still check in for the voters coming on the inside. And so the purchase for these two new, two new pulp pads have come in at a rate of thirty-five, twenty-five. And that was not originally what it was intended because, like I said, the legislation came out after, after the budget was set. And I have twenty-eight thousand dollars in my discretionary fund and I'm requesting to have my budget amended in order to purchase those two pulp pads.
No, no money came in the legislation?
No money. Unfunded mandates or lots of them.
The numbers that are on the sheet, that was in my package, shows a pulp pad at twenty-nine twenty-five and an apple pad for six hundred.
That's correct.
And then a license.
The licensing we've been mentioning, first year is, is covered and this is for the next year.
So what is, what is the amount you're asking for? Total, total?
I'm asking for a total of thirty-five, twenty-five.
You want to prove thirty-five, twenty-five?
Before you do that.
Well, it's okay. But we have a motion and a second. Further discussion I do want, Mrs. Canty, is gonna need to weigh in on this. Please proceed, Ms. Warnix.
Okay. On that, I, I just, I was just was thinking that there may be some other things and I was just wanting to know if we can just do the budget amendment for what's in my bank account and just line item, those items, increase those amounts. Because the discretionary fund is, is technically by Secretary of State's office. The electronic funds management should not even be in the county budget. It should not be listed there. The law that pertains to that, those are funds that are, we earn by holding these elections for other entities that we earn. And as long as they are used for election needs in my office, that funds can be spent for that.
Okay. Ms. Canty?
Um, budget amendments are for emergency purposes, which is one 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 point zero four one, or for certifying additional revenues, which is one 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 point zero four three. And there's three statutes under that one that are for grant purposes. And that, those are all additional revenues that are received. So this budget, there's been seven hundred and fifty dollars used out of it. The initial budget is for eighteen thousand, three seventy-six, which was set, which was put in prior to additional revenues that were received during the budget process. Ms. Warnix came to my office and amended her other, or adjusted her other ones prior to adoption, but did not, did not touch this one, which is her responsibility, of course. So that's what I have to say.
So, so, thank you both. So as, as far as the, the nature of the agenda item, first of all, Ms. Warnix, I don't, I'm, I'm happy to hear the other commissioners' opinions, but I, your, your, your second request makes sense. I get it. But I don't think the agenda item is drafted broadly enough for us to, for us to do that. So then we're looking at a request for an emergency budget amendment, and the motion has been made for a total of seven thousand and fifty dollars. Is that right, for two? Or was it just...
No, no, sir.
So the total cost is thirty-two, thirty-five, twenty-five?
Yes, sir. And I just, I had asked for a budget amendment of forty-five hundred just to cover.
Cover, okay. And so I guess this would be my follow-up. And so I guess this would be my follow-up question for Ms. Cantu, because one way or another, we're gonna get these for you. I think, hey, and that's my opinion, but I'm feeling the rest of us have the opinion that we want you to continue to do the bang-up job that you've done and remain in compliance with state law. The question really, I think, becomes what is the proper way to do it? And I don't know if, if our auditor is telling us that an emergency budget amendment at this stage is improper, that we can't justify it, and I don't think that we can proceed that way, then my next question to Ms. Cantu.
That would be up to Commissioner's Court, that is, I'm just showing, I'm just letting you know the two statutes that allow a budget amendment. So if the court says that this is an emergency, then that would be up to the court to make that decision.
Okay.
Because the other one is certifying additional revenues, which we are not doing. So those are the two.
You have to have these prior and certified before the next election. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And the next election's coming, right? Probably in the first of the year.
In February twenty twenty.
Well, there's seven hundred and fifty dollars spent out of this budget. I mean, do we want to see if, you know, monies can be pulled up for that? I mean, right now, small equipment, it only has a thousand dollars, so there wasn't any, I guess, preparation for this.
I think what she's saying is if it's not a budget amendment, then, then the next is, it's early in the budget year, there's plenty of resources available to, to do a line item transfer or to bring in from one of our other funds at the county to transfer into this.
Or even use, not to transfer in this one, this is discretionary fund, so I would not suggest that, but even using, when you do a purchase order, we can always, you know, pull from different funds within a purchase order, so.
Pull from funds that are part of her budget, that are outside of her budget?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of her.
And that's what I was trying to avoid, to put the cost on the county since it did come in after budget. That's why, these are funds that we, we can use. See, our problem is, I think, election code says one thing and then her budget, or her law that she has to go by says, does something else. But I'm under the understanding that the budget, that budget should not even be on the county, it should not be in the county budget.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Our discretionary funds are, and they're in a disclose, they're in a disclosure portion of the budget. And so I have reached out to other auditors and they have these in their budgets under similar provisions and they would not go.
It's an accounting, it's an accounting issue, not a first-streets issue.
Right.
You're talking first-streets, you're talking, we've prepared a budget, we've approved the budget, voted on it, so.
We only have to.
The conflict is really not, it's just not, it's not no, it's not yes, it's really two different train tracks.
Yes, it's, it's her local government code against election code and they don't say the same thing, evidently.
Yeah, but if Commissioner's Court is comfortable with, you know, determining that this is an emergency and that.
She's gotta have.
That the best way to do it is through a budget amendment and not a line item transfer or bank or through some other fund in the budget.
I'm gonna keep my motion intact because, Judge, we don't know how long it's gonna take to come in. They've gotta be certified, they've gotta be calibrated, they've gotta be set up and March is gonna be here before you move.
You got that, bud?
I had a monitor, is there other funding, so it's not an emergency fund, so they're gonna be on time.
Stay in balance.
Right, that's why, that's why I mentioned on a purchase order, you can put two different funding sources and that's why I asked Ms. Warnix what the requirement on this purchase would be. Is she requesting reimbursement from her, her thirty-five for these? For this amendment?
I guess she's trying to figure out, April's asking, what are we doing when, are you asking to be reimbursed?
No, I'm, I'm willing to spend the money out of the thirty-five.
So it doesn't matter if she uses a portion out of thirty-five and a portion out of twelve, for instance, to answer your question, that could be done, yes.
Is there a cleaner way to do it or something?
That is another way to do it.
She has this money, she has this money to spend for this.
And I'm willing to spend it if that's going on the count.
Right, it's just a.
That's what we earn the money for, is to continue to do that.
The auditors, the amount of work that the auditors gotta do as far as amending the budget.
Well, that's not, that's not the issue. I mean, I do, I do amend the budget, you know, in different ways.
What if it's something that says, well, it's.
It is up to the court. It is up to the court.
All right, at this, at this point in time, there's, there's no further discussion. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you both. A difficult issue, I appreciate the insight and the effort to find a solution. Moving on to agenda item number twenty, approve joint resolution and statistical information for joint primary and primary runoff if necessary. Ms. Warnix, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I have the joint resolution that I need to get signed by the court for the joint primary for March fifth, please.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion, I have a second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Gentlemen. Pass it down the road. Moving on, agenda item number twenty-one, approve request for county election administrator to use county credit card to purchase ten signed stakes for new mandatory curbside voting signs.
I don't know if, John noticed the big black, like the real estate signs that we had on the curbside up here. I would like to purchase those. Mr. Isagary was kind enough to purchase, save the county a considerable amount of money for a way for us to post those. He went forward, paid it, was through, paid it for us, all done, brought them to us and gives us place just to set those stakes down in there without them being in the back room. And so I need to purchase those. The company I buy those from, they used to be CEOs, they quit doing those and so now it's credit.
How much did you pay them?
Uh, did not get the bid on them, but I'm thinking they're four, they're around forty dollars a piece or so, maybe twenty-four, depends on how many you buy. It's that, so.
There's money in the budget.
They would come out of my budget. They would come out of my budget.
Money in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They would come out of my, my budget.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I get a motion on this one? I don't think I got a motion on it, but I appreciate y'all's support.
Move to approve.
I got a motion.
Yeah, motion in a second.
Yeah, I think that was on the last one, was it the last one? Is it?
I didn't get a motion.
I don't think I got a motion. I think, I think I left this one.
Yeah, that's right, it was.
No, y'all did, y'all did twenty, but we didn't, I don't think y'all did.
So you can make the motion.
That was your second.
Okay.
Got it.
Commissioner DeWitt, make the motion in a second. And all those in favor please indicate by saying aye again.
Aye.
All opposed again, motion passes without exception again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, bud. Agenda item number twenty-two, approve to declare the land pride forty-four ten utility medical for B County Maintenance Department non-functional and unsalvageable for auction with CM auction. Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Gentlemen, agenda item number twenty-three, approve order to adopt investment policy for the auditor's office.
Move to approve. Comments?
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Judge, the front page says September twenty twenty-three, that's probably when it starts. And then it says through by Commissioner's Court, ten thirteen twenty-three.
That's all my fault.
Right, Dave.
All of my fault.
But here's my real question. Here's my real question. I read this thing several times and it's interesting reading to say the least, it's not something I want to read again.
And it's been worked on, which, last year was when we made all of those amendments to match our budget.
But here's the part, I couldn't find it. How do we pay our investment officer who's not in the investment policy? How does he pay?
Because that's, that's separate, that's in his contract.
Okay, should it be in the investment policy?
No, sir, because that is for our, that is for our brokers, that is for, for our, for our bank and for our investments. We have to have that in place and it has nothing to do with our investment advisor because the PFI, PFI A is, doesn't always have an investment advisor. The county has that, it's, it's not a.
Okay, so it should be in the document.
No.
Okay, I stand for it.
That is a difference.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number twenty-four, approve selection of law enforcement liability option of five thousand or ten thousand dollar deductible with coverage period starting January one twenty twenty-four through January one twenty twenty-five. I looked at these numbers, I didn't see the difference except that we have an extra million dollars of coverage for the extra five thousand dollar deductible from two to three million.
So there's no thousand dollar deductibles anymore.
I'm sorry, five thousand.
Right, and so thousand is being wiped out by tax, okay? So for this particular one, their recommendation is going up to five thousand, which gives the same coverage across the board unless we want to go to ten thousand, which would not be my recommendation. My recommendation is to save at the five thousand, which is what is recommended by our insurance.
Looking at that document, do we need to be putting checkmarks on the right-hand side selecting these things?
Once we, once we receive, and this had to come through the court at their recommendation.
Is there any recommendations?
I was just.
Five thousand dollars, we hit deer a lot. Unfortunately.
Okay.
They hit a lot, there's, there's claims from the insurance.
Forty thousand dollars on a tourney a year, you at night, you're gonna hit deer.
That, if this covers as damage to our equipment?
Every five thousand dollar deductible comes out of our budget.
And they have two annually, they have two annually is what tax pays.
I thought it was coming in a different direction and I was like, extra million for five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna motion to approve a five thousand. I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. We've agreed to select five thousand dollar option.
Do you?
What's that?
You'd be surprised how many deer run into the side of your.
I know, I'm surprised.
I'm sorry.
I would be surprised, you know, because I've never had a deer run into the side of my vehicle.
The sheriff's office.
Yeah. That's, I'll work. Just wondering where y'all are at right? I guess it's late at night, early in the morning and right at dusk.
I think you get points.
I've had deer run.
Are y'all, is there like?
Our next one we get deer.
An office or something?
You're on the.
Maybe it's just, yeah, all right. Agenda item number twenty-five, approve cutter fire protection credit application for the B County Sheriff's Office. Apologies if I mispronounced.
Move to approve, the amount is five thousand ten dollars. Some of the stuff they're gonna be doing, the annual firecracker inspection, the fire pump inspection, stand fire hose and fire hose, and I'm sure this has to be done if the fire was stayed off.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number twenty-six, invitation for Judge Moore and B County Commissioners to the District Eleven Judges and Commissioners Conference on Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Jackson County Services Building in Edna, Texas.
Yes. You can pray off.
Can we get points if we order an extra judicial?
You don't need one of these.
Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of the state.
And those are from y'all on behalf of Johnny and District Eleven. We invite you back.
I never leave. And, and, you know, this year, and I have to, I don't want to. Well, I do want to make it. My son has a, has a soccer exposition in Las Vegas.
Oh, wow.
It's not fair, but I told Jack, I told my wife, I take him to the state.
Boy, your sacrifice was great for her.
You're right, and that's, that's really thank, sort of, like an unsung hero.
I can't believe your wife would just say, oh.
Hopefully she's not watching.
I'm late. Yeah.
But thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I know it's a well-attended event by the commissioners every year, so I know y'all look forward to it, so.
There was a time when I was one of the featured speakers when I was in the chair.
We don't need a motion or anything on this, so I'm gonna move on. Agenda item number twenty-seven, approve Texas opioid settlement agreements. Again, no settlement agreements, so we'll pass on that. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-eight, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant CBG Status and Project Update. Commissioner, what is Commissioner Oliver, anything to update us on?
That's what I mentioned in my comments earlier and the, I talked to Natalie Gonzalez and Natalie Gonzalez says that we're not, right now she feels like we're not in jeopardy of losing all the work we did for that and it's gonna be referred to, let me get to the officials here. It's gonna go under the criteria that AFFH regulations affirmatively furthering fair housing and they would like to set additional steps being taken to ensure localities are adhering on paper, fair housing laws and rules. By doing this, GLO will satisfy the findings of this office and HUD have previously approved the CBFG MIT action plan by GLO.
Thank you.
So that's the gist of it, basically hopefully she's thinking that we're not gonna lose all that work of the D and contractors and everything else.
And we haven't heard anything, Commissioner DeWitt, from the CB COG as far as the result. This relates to a complaint that was made to HUD on the importment scheme that was utilized by the thirteen councils of governments across the state of Texas, claiming discrimination. They're considering pulling the determinations that all of the local COGS made and making their own determination and then feeding it down to the state of Texas, so just, you know, no comment. I do want, I so want to. Moving on, agenda item number twenty-nine, American Rescue Plan, ARP Status and Project. Commissioners DeWitt, Commissioner Lenny, anything to?
Judge, at this time, we pretty much got all of our eggs in the BLC basket.
Excellent.
I couldn't say that our money is out of the trouble.
Wonderful. I did, I mean, what a wonderful involvement that's been ARP and the other one for this county, so great job.
The interest.
That's right, even the interest was meaningful, this has been really great.
You know, I want to go back to, the one thing we did that I really look at is those fire departments. That thirty thousand dollars that we were able to move to each fire department has been a godsend.
Yes, sir.
And our mugs.
And our mugs, absolutely. I mean, it, I'm proud of what we did, Judge. I mean, none of it's been wasted, no one is saying, well.
Y'all should have done this.
No, Judge, everybody said, man, look what y'all did. I mean, it's, it's good.
I agree.
It's good.
I agree.[1635.87] Anything further? Okay, we have no executive session items today. We'll move on to agenda item number 30. Gentlemen, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion in a second. I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed? Okay. Yeah, sorry, he still, is it? I'm sorry, motion passes without exception.